No. Welcome, everyone. I, Council President Walsh, call the January 16th City Council Meeting to order. Mayor Polly has an excused absence tonight, so I will be serving as Mayor pro tem. The meeting is being held on Tuesday due to Martin Luther King Jr. Day Holiday that occurred yesterday. And as a reminder, we continue to live in a world that is both virtual and in person, so we will have members of the public and staff participating virtually tonight, in addition to those we welcome in the room. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so I welcome everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We have several items on our agenda tonight. We're going to start with special business, followed by audience comments, then we've got consent calendar and three items on regular business. So I will start by inviting the members of the Washington State Korean American Day Foundation to the podium with me for a proclamation. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming. So the members of the Washington State Korean American Day Foundation, I've got the names of Song Mi, Suna Kim, Ken Hong, Hildje Kim, Lisa Cho, and Sherry Song. So thank you very much for attending with us. So I'm going to read the proclamation and then give you a moment to speak as well. So whereas Korean American Day is celebrated worldwide on January 13th to commemorate the first Korean immigrants to the United States in 1903, and whereas Issaquah recognizes the invaluable contributions from Korean-American individuals, families, and businesses, and whereas we acknowledge those contributions to our local arts, education, sciences, and to our economic, social, and democratic institutions that strengthen our city, and whereas the United States is home to the largest Korean-American community in the world, and Washington State has the fifth-highest concentration of Korean-Americans in the country, and whereas this year will mark 71 years of the U.S.-Korean Alliance signifying a staple of peace and stability on the Korean Peninsula and in the Indo-Pacific region, and whereas we come together as a community in a spirit of unity to celebrate the first pioneers that paved the way for the vibrant Korean-American community that thrives today and the invaluable contributions that enrich our city. Now, therefore, I, Lindsey Walsh, on behalf of Mayor Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim January 13th, 2024, to be Korean American Day in the City of Issaquah, and I urge the community to join in special observance and celebration of Korean American Day. Thank you very much.[243.12][243.12](APPLAUSE) Would you like to make a few comments?
Thank you very much, Council President Walsh, and to the council members that are present here, as well as the mayor who's not here. We really appreciate this recognition that you have made in this proclamation for the Korean-Americans residing in Issaquah, the Greater Precious Sound Region, as well as in Washington State. And behind me, we have the hard-working committee members that work every year to put on a great event to commemorate Korean American Day, and especially our Chair this year, Suna Kim, and she's worked for several years tirelessly to put on the celebrations for the event. So once again, on behalf of the Korean community, thank you very much. We are proud Americans, and we are also proud of our heritage. Thank you.[295.02][295.02](APPLAUSE)
So we've got our city administrator who's going to take a picture. If we want to come around, we can go ahead. Excellent. Well, it is always lovely to have people in the room with us. We sometimes are speaking to an empty room, in addition to all of the residents and people who watch online. So the next point on our agenda is audience comments. So members of the public may address council at this time, either in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, you're going to press star 3. If you're on a computer or smartphone, you're going to look for the hand icon. You can also send the host a chat message. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before we close that portion of the meeting. And so Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
We have a few virtual attendees who are raising their hands.
Okay, fantastic. So, for those making comments, you are invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact a follow-up if needed. When recognized, if you're a virtual attendee, you can unmute your microphone, and if you want, turn on your camera. If you're in person, you can go ahead and step up to the center lectern. You're going to press a button so that the microphone turns red, so that we can hear you. You will state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit the comments to five minutes. If you're attending virtually, and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You're encouraged to rejoin the meeting if you're able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city and the council takes comments seriously. We thank you for taking the time to address us. So Clerk, can you please identify the first person who has signed up to speak?
Yes, Connie Marsh. Connie, I'll make you a panelist now.
Okay. Hi, I'm Connie Marsh. I live up on Squawk. You got an email from me about the pool, so I'm not going to address that. Assume that you have read it. The next comment is about public accessibility to things of interest. So that includes both the public records and also the Ad hoc Finance Committee's, I don't know, I guess, cumulation of comments from their committee meeting. So I appreciate the easier access to general public records that has happened through the public records process. It's been long and arduous, but it's better. Now, the conversation in the ad hoc meeting was actually not that different. It turned into a conversation about how do we actually make records easier to access and more transparent to the community? So that is a great conversation, but I am unwilling to let oversight, the city council's review of how the community's money is spent be reduced without a commitment to increase transparency and ease of access to this information by the community. And I am unsure of how that is going to be linked strongly enough together to actually make sure that the information does become available to the community. And so I would like you to have a conversation about, like, what is the council's role in ensuring that this information is provided to the community, and also what is the council's role in ensuring that the citizens' money is well-spent? Because I'm a little hazy on all that. So, thank you for your efforts. It's been fascinating to listen to, and I hope you all get home safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. I would say the same to you, but I believe you are home, so stay home safely. Clerk, do we have anyone else signed up to speak?
Yes, we have an individual with phone number 206300 who'd like to make comments. I'm going to unmute you now. You have the floor.
Hi, this is Steve Pereira. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Steve.
Thank you. Let me go into my back room real quick. So there are two items that I wanted to comment on. The first is the Financial Affairs Ad hoc Committee, and I guess I'm a little perplexed. I see two pieces to this, or two parts. The first is that the administration wants to have more control over what types of items they are authorized to speak on. That piece makes sense to me. So I'm not going to comment on that. The other part seems to be the administration seeking more approval of budget authority to, at a higher financial level than currently committed. I personally am opposed to the administration having an increased financial ability to approve items. I like the threshold at $100,000. It's a nice round number. It's arbitrary, but it's a cutoff point that makes sense. I know, and I make these comments independent of any particular mayor or any particular administration. I think goes beyond it. It's the role of the city council to plan and approve the budget process, and increasing that budget authority outside of the city council process is not the reason why I elect city council members to represent the people in this body and group. It's not about, again, a particular administration. It's not about a strong mayor campaigning. It's about the voice of the people. While we can increase transparency and visibility of those, and we should do those things, I think it belongs strongly in the city council's purview to approve the budget process as part of their role in policy and budget financing. I think it's somewhat of a dereliction of duty to put those things onto the administration and not do the city council's due diligence role. So I think that covered the things I wanted to on that piece. The other item I want to talk on is a little bit more, I think, still city business, but still less concise. About the time that the concrete barriers were going up along I-90 for sound reduction control, I sent an email to the city council saying that I think we did the process of becoming a regional growth center a little bit backwards. We didn't plan for it first and then decide what we wanted it to be. We decided to become a regional growth center, and now we're kind of back go and said what that means and what that looks like and what that feels like. And I tend to use a baseball metaphor, baseball analogy. I think strike one was when we looked at allowing growth in our forested hillsides. We decided to allow growth up to 15 to 45 degree slopes. That is not something we initially looked at doing. There was a strong desire to have the forested hillsides remain forested. Now they can be developed. We lose those tree coverages and canopies, and the water retention that they retain, and the aesthetic, and the carbon sequestration that they do. We're losing our ability to borrow native resilience against climate warmth and climate growth and climate warmth. We're giving away those materials. That's strike one. Strike two is the ability of the city to look at waiving development fees in favor of supposedly promoting growth in the central Issaquah Plan area. Another way of looking at this was also considered whether we should change the density or the floor area ratio, and whether we should reduce that to promote growth. Those weren't things that we looked at and we planned for and decided we wanted to do when we first became a regional growth center. Now we're looking at strike three, which might come next, or who knows when the idea of promoting growth and development over the things that are central and character and key to Issaquah, when we just look at what other cities or other jurisdictions are doing to promote growth. We just want to become bigger. And I'm not sure that it's fair to expect that we're going to maintain our unique character of Issaquah. If we keep just saying, what can we do to promote growth, we've changed the question from what makes Issaquah unique and special to what can we do to promote growth, in the sense that bigger can't ever be defined. We just seem to want more of it. And so I have an ask that we take this issue and suspend the public comments and publicly talk about it.
Steve?
As a committee.
Steve, you've reached the end of your five-minute comment time.
I'm probably going to stop. I'm going to end and say thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for summarizing at the end. Appreciate it. And Clerk, do we have anyone else signed up to speak?
No one else has signed up.
Okay. We have a few members of the public. Do we have anybody who would like to come to the dais and speak? Elizabeth can start out while you guys figure out, but we would welcome you up after Elizabeth makes her comments. Thank you, Elizabeth. And if you press the button, yeah, there you go.
My name is Elizabeth Mopin. I live at 100 Big Bear Place Northwest in Issaquah. And I understood that there were to be some students here to speak about a particular danger. We are all worried about climate change, and rightly so, but there is a larger danger here in Washington that we don't talk about. Here in Washington, we have a submarine base with 720 nuclear warheads, each capable of destroying a city, killing millions, and having long-term catastrophic effects on the environment and future generations. Some say that these weapons serve as a deterrent to war, but wars keep happening all the same. Any use of these weapons is likely to produce an all-out nuclear war, with death and destruction beyond belief.
Elizabeth, I'm going to interrupt you just for a moment. We have asked, and we do have a new policy, to require our comments to be related to city policies, programs, and things. So is there something that you have related to what is happening in the city that you could talk about?
I was hoping that we could take a stand against stockpiling nuclear weapons, because I feel that they pose a threat. Accidents can and do happen. In 1994, a B-52 crashed at Fairfield Air Force Base, missing a nuclear weapons storage facility by 50 feet. That's all I had to say. I'm sure the students have something more.
Fantastic. Thank you, Elizabeth. Any one of you, or all three of you, if you want to come up and make comments, we would love to hear from you. Please don't feel intimidated at all. So start out by stating your name and any relationship to the city, and then you can make your comments. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ben, and I am a student at Issaquah High School, and I am a resident of Squawk Mountain. And I would like to bring to attention a topic related to what the lady who was just before me was speaking, which is that we students in Issaquah High School are also worried about the fact that the U.S. is closer to, is that the U.S. is closer to nuclear war than it has been since the Cuban Missile Crisis. And we would like to call on the city and ask the city how they could, how they can help to divest public funds from the wars.
I'm going to have to take a moment and just pause here. We do have a policy that asks for all of our comments to be related to city programs, or policies, or procedures. I really don't want to discourage your ability to make comments, but if you would go ahead and write in, we would love to hear from you. CityCouncil@Issaquahwa.gov would be a really good way to take your comments and address them to city council, particularly if you have anything related to an action that you would want us to take, or something like that. That would be the best way to make that connection.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a little bit of an awkward situation, as we're trying a different way of creating a policy. There's been a lot of hate speech in the area, and so we're just trying to make sure that all of our comments are relevant to city programs and our business at hand. So thank you very, very much for attending. Do we have anyone else indicating a desire to speak? Okay, fantastic. Thank you for coming by. We have heard from several members of the community, one mentioning the pool and public records, as well as contract accessibility that's coming through with our fiscal policies or financial policies. Steve Pereira also talked about financial policies, and then also growth and our different ways of discussing that. And then we heard from two members of the community, a set of students, and another just about the general state of the world. I will leave it at that. So really, just thank you for taking the time and making comments. Written comments really can be, and we do read them all, CityCouncil@Issaquahwa.gov. So the next item of business is our consent calendar. The mayor has noted that she does not have any remarks on tonight's consent calendar items. Committee chairs, are there any committee chairs or chair designees who would like to report on any of the consent calendar items? Okay. No? No? Okay. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Yes.
Great. Does any council member desire to remove any items from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion?
Thank you, Council President Walsh. I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion is to approve the consent calendar as presented, has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Okay, hearing none. The motion before council is to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously. The next item of business is regular business. The first item on our agenda in this section is AB 8553, Public Records Policy and Fee Schedule. And we are being asked to adopt the ordinance and approve the resolution. I'd like to invite public records analyst Tammy Mueller to the lecturn. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me back. I have no presentation for you tonight. And as was just explained, the January City, sorry, Committee of the Whole Meeting, the administration's modified records copy fee proposal was presented to you. This proposal removed the electronic records system transmission fee of $9, and for those requests that would be fulfilled via our GovQA public records portal. Instead, a proposal was made for a $0.25 fee per record, and for records that would be provided via the online portal. And then across the board, regardless of how the requests are provided, or the copies of records are provided, we would propose a $3 fee, sorry, a $3 minimum fee, where anything that is $3 and under would not be charged any fees. And at that meeting, a majority of the council expressed support for this modified recommendation and suggested that it be brought forward tonight. So that modified recommendation is incorporated into the substitute resolution, attached as Exhibit A to the Agenda Bill. So please let me know if you have any questions as you discuss tonight.
Okay, let's start out with any questions. Okay, then I'm going to start with the substitute motion. So, let's see. I move to adopt a substitute resolution, Exhibit A to Agenda Bill 8553, incorporating the Committee of the Whole recommendation to remove the $9 electronic records transmission charge, and instead charge an electronic record copying fee of $0.25 per record with a waiver of the first $3 of fees. Okay, and do we have a second on that substitution? Second? Okay. So the vote at this point is going to be whether or not we want to adopt this as the substitute motion, which we can then discuss, question, all of that. So, on the motion to adopt a substitute resolution, all those in favor?
Excuse me, council member. We need to allow for any discussion.
Saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Signify by saying nay. That passes unanimously. Thank you, as we muddle through the substitutions. So, the following motion is now before the council for a vote to approve the substitute resolution number 2023-18, adopting a public records policy and public records fee schedule, and ordering publication of this resolution and the Public Records Act rules, and adoption, adopt ordinance number 3042, repealing Chapter 1.28, Public Records, and Chapter 3.60, charges for police department reports and services of the Issaquah Municipal Code. So that is the resolution that we are discussing at this time, which reflects the conversation that was had at the Committee of the Whole. So, is there any discussion on this motion? We do not need a second, because we adopted the substitute motion. So what happened at the previous regular meeting was that we had a motion on the table, which was seconded, and then we referred that to the Committee of the Whole to discuss. So that motion was still sitting on the table, and what we're doing now is we're, we just voted to substitute in this new motion for what was already on the table. Does everybody here, we are now talking about basically what we talked about at the Committee of the Whole, which is that the electronic records item is no longer in place, and there is a $3 waiver point. So, on that concept, do we have conversation about the general public records idea that we are the policy? Councilmember Ray?
I feel like the designated, I'll get you started, guy next person. I'm generally supportive of the changes. I am wholeheartedly in support of the recommendation to remove the $9 electronic records fee, and I'm fine with the $0.25 copying fee. As we talked about at the Committee of the Whole, I'm just going to say it again, I think the $3 minimum is way too low, and I think that as we go into this, the administration is going to find that the cost of issuing invoice for $3.17 is going to cost us more than $3.17. So I am, I will support these changes, but I am beseeching the administration So, I am, I will support these changes, but I am beseeching the administration to be diligent and evaluate the cost of running the program so that we can come back and say, what should it be and true it up at a future date. But I am, I am okay with where we are at today.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. I guess just to repeat some of my comments from last week. I'm happy and supportive of this updated approach. Our staff have put a lot of time and effort into this and we're very grateful to you for doing that. Our staff also put a lot of time and effort into being professional and responsive to public records requests and making sure people get the information that they need and want. I think this proposal allows us to capture that time and effort, but also prepare us for more detailed body camera redaction work. Also, to continue to honor and respect government accountability and transparency more generally. As for the electronic records system transmission fee, I actually think the $3 threshold is smart, at least for now. I think the most compelling argument for me last week during our Committee of the Whole was that it allows us to narrow the scope of the individual who's requesting records, which I think was one of our stated goals at the outset too. So, and then it also helps those who really just need access to that one record or that one collection of records to get what they need free of hassles. Though, I don't want to completely dismiss the concern, the concern that Councilmember Ray brought up. So, let's just keep an eye on that and in case the time and cost of invoicing creates more trouble than it helps. But again, thank you very much for all the diligence that you've put into this. I really appreciate it and I'm supportive.
Do we have any other discussion? I'm just gonna echo what I've heard. Really professional conversation on this. I think this helps the entire region as we come into these ideas. It was particularly necessary as we're looking at body cam and the redaction requirements there in order to serve the public and have that accessibility of public information, but also be protective of those individuals who are caught on a camera that they did not anticipate to be. But it recognizes the cost to the city to provide those services. So, it's a fine balance and I think we've done a good job. I'm also supportive of the idea of reflecting back on whether the $3 fee serves us in the long term or the $3 waiver serves us in the long term and consideration of cost. So, there is no further discussion. The motion before council is, let's see. Trying to make sure I'm not on the substitute. Okay. Okay, there we go. The motion before council is to approve the substitute resolution number 2023-18, adopting a public records policy and public records fee schedule and ordering publication of this resolution and the Public Records Act rules and adopt ordinance number 3042, repealing Chapter 1.28 Public Records and Chapter 3.60 charges for police department reports and services of the Isicua Municipal Code. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Tammy. Appreciate it. The next item of business is AB 8750, Julius Bone Pool Feasibility Study. And we're going to invite Parks and Community Services Director Jeff Watling and Recreation Manager Brian Bernstein to make a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Walsh, Mayor Protem, and good evening, council. Jeff Watling, Parks and Community Services Director, here tonight to give a brief introduction and then hand it over to Brian Bernstein. Am I now sharing? All right. Good evening. Thank you so much. Per direction from the Services Safety and Parks Committee at their December 11th meeting, Brian and I are here to present the pool feasibility study as we presented it that evening. First, some quick background, as shared with the committee. The Julius Bones Pool, as I'm sure we're all aware, is a very, very popular facility and in many, many ways over prescribed, be it swimming lessons, be it exercise, be it need for lap swim, be it school use. It's a, it's a very overscheduled facility. With that in mind, and as well as really understanding and recognizing the relative high cost it would take to build an entirely new pool, we sought to explore and better understand if an onsite pool expansion was even viable for us to consider. We sought and received some grant funds to get this work done and completed this work towards the end of last year. This work built upon the prior 2009 feasibility study that's also in your agenda packet tonight. This work also sought to leverage the 2014, 2015 capital improvements that were made to the pool. You may recall, thanks to voters saying yes to the 2013 park bond, $5 million was invested into the pool. Those improvements focused primarily on systems improvements and support infrastructure to the building and in many ways greatly extending the life of that pool. This study then really meant to frame the question. Can we now expand the pool? Can we now expand water capacity on that site? As I said at the committee meeting without bearing the lead, the answer from the study is yes. It does appear there is an option for us to consider further. So, the purpose tonight is to share the results of that study, not just stop at yes and then end the presentation. I have a chance to share that pool feasibility study for that potential expansion and then seek your support on next steps. As shared with the Park Board in November and the committee earlier in December, those next steps would involve further exploration of this option, further community engagement around this option and further understanding of funding that might be available to start to frame a funding strategy. We also in the next steps want to consider the context of this potential capital improvement with our other capital priorities, knowing that later this year, we're gonna have a park plan update that's going to be completed and community sharing their priorities and needs for that work as well as numerous other capital infrastructure needs. So, with that, I am gonna hand it over to Brian Bernstein, our Recreation Manager, who led this effort. Look forward to any questions you might have and feedback you might have. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Good evening, council. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'd like to just acknowledge really quickly our steering committee that worked on this. You know, a large group of folks that really, you know, spent a lot of time last year meeting with us and discussing this topic. Our group consisted of a lot of, we had city staff from, oh, from the Recreation Services Team, Community Planning Development, the Facility Services. We also included members of the Isicua School District and members of the aquatic community. Through a competitive process, the city selected NAC Architects to be our consultant for this project. And here's just a quick picture. Brooke Hanley and Brian Love were the leads on this project and sort of spearheaded the effort on the NAC side of things. We also worked with Ryan Nuschriner and Ken Ballard. They were sub consultants underneath NAC. And then we also worked with Coughlin, Porter, London Civil Consultants and the RC Cost Group for cost estimating. Our feasibility process, there were multiple steps involved in the feasibility process. We'll briefly touch on these tonight in the presentation. With limited time, I won't be going into detail on these steps. But as referenced, these are detailed and these are, these are all included in your council packet as well. I want to say, I think that council pack was what, 200 and something pages for this topic. For the purpose of this study, the items that we talked about here with the feasibility study process, we broke them down into three tasks. Jeff kind of touched on these as well in his introduction. The number one was understanding Isicua's water needs and project goals with a focus on expanding capacity on the existing site. The second task was assessing the existing site and opportunities for expansion, looking at the condition of the existing facility and opportunities for expansion. And number three was building, you know, developing, building and operating costs if an expanded facility was built on this site. For the purpose of this study, the market, the market area was broken down into the city of Isicua as the primary market sector and the Isicua School District is a secondary market sector. Ballard King conducted a market analysis that determined and confirmed that additional water capacity is needed to serve the existing population within the city of Isicua. And again, I'm just scratching the very surface of that because there's a lot of data there within that packet. Some of the key points. The analysis shows that there is a strong desire for additional pool space with both the primary and secondary markets. And currently, there's a lot of really popular programs competing for space, another item Jeff quickly touched on. You know, we have learned, a lot of learn to swim classes, water safety, and then the competitive and recreational swimming community that are all desiring and wishing for more space in that, within that facility. Our project goals, the project, the purpose of this feasibility study was to target and to look into how we could expand and add on to the existing Julius Bone facility, increasing the water and to develop a facility concept that can improve service to all the existing programs that are currently using the pool. So, it wasn't for any just one specific program. It was for all current and future users of the pool. Part of our facility analysis, the picture you have here is sort of picture of our, it's a picture of our existing pool as is. To give you a quick, hopefully be quick, journey of where we've been with this pool, just for those who maybe know the history of when it was, you know, constructed. It was built in 1972 under the King County Forward Thrust Program. At that time, the pool was built. The population of Isicua was 3,000 residents. In 1994, through an agreement with King County, the city of Isicua assumed ownership and operation of the Julius Bone Pool. 2009, the city conducted a pool feasibility study that identified the need for additional water capacity and that study was included in your council packet. I think Jeff mentioned that. And then also, as Jeff mentioned, 2013, city passed a park bond allocating $5 million. You know, basically 50 years later, the amount of water we had in 1972 is the same amount of water we have in 2024. So, in a nutshell, that's, you know, the building's been upgraded, but our water space is still the same. Some of our key points here, you know, the existing pool, as evaluated by Water Technologies Incorporated. The pool's in really good shape for its age. Like I said, same for myself probably on that one. But this can be attributed to a solid maintenance management program and under the city's leadership and the work that was done in 2015 to update and upgrade the pool systems. Both of those have really, the maintenance and then the upgrades in 2015 really did help prolong the life of it. And Water Technologies was surprised that for the age of the facility, just what great condition the city is taking, you know, how they're taking care of it and the work that was done to extend its life. There's room on site for a reasonably sized expansion on the west side and that side is relatively flat. It does slope down as you get going towards Front Street. The previous locker room expansion that we completed in 2015 will support most of the plumbing, most of the plumbing fixture counts that are needed with the minimal additions if an extended, expanded facility is built. So, a lot of the infrastructure that was built in 2015 is actually going to help if an extended facility or an expanded facility was built, or is built. The existing door opening. I think I got that one. Oops. How bad I got. Bear with me. Yeah, there's an existing door opening that could be used to connect the two facilities from the existing to the expanded facility. And one last item we discovered that just want to make sure, share is that, you know, through the study of this and looking at all the different variables, if an expanded facility were built, we would have to include a sprinkler system to go into the existing facility along with the new construction. A little bit, I'll go, I'll go through these next slides pretty quickly, but I felt it was important to share these slides to underscore the considerations that the steering committee had when it came to thinking about the design and location of an expansion on this site. An expansion to the west, as you can see here, where, you know, it's right at the southern border of entry into Old Town and into Isicua. It's really, it's really a nice focal point there for where you're coming into the town. And this would be very visible to those entering into our community. The steering committee looked at the existing buildings and spaces around the Julius Bone Pool to consider what an expanded facility would look like to others. So, trying to, trying to take that look too of like not just what's our facility? What's it gonna look like when you're coming upon this facility and seeing it from a neighbor's point of view, if you will? Continue with the concept design. This slide is showing some of the circulation of people arriving at Julius Bone Pool as well as that people are using one of the other major destinations around it. It's acknowledging, you know, the congestion can happen specifically at specific times, especially during, if you've ever been around during school pickup drop off, it does get pretty congested down there. If an expanded facility were built, we wanted to call out the, you know, if construction, we want to make sure that we considered, you know, other options to improve some of that traffic flow if and when we were to do some of that work. Development on the west side of the existing building, on the west side of the existing building has great visibility to a couple of our open spaces and it's just off the Isicua Creek and as mentioned is at the southern gateway of our town, of our city. And you can see that here in this slide that we got. It just has great visibility, some open spaces of the city. And it sits right up there on the hill where it is very noticeable. And then on this, you can also see here that we talked about that utility door where there's a connection piece. There's an existing utility door right here in the middle and it does create a nice flow for traffic of people going between the two different facilities. You know, this slide is just sort of a, it's kind of a nice slide to show how important water is to the city of Isicua, right? That we have a lot of water themes, a lot of water connectivity that really does, you know, bring the community together through recreation and socialization activities. In an effort to explore some of the cost-saving measures, we looked into a number of enclosures. One being the dino dome structure pictured here on the left with the ability to open up during good weather months. And the other being a sprung structure here on the right in a tent type structure with aluminum framing. And then lastly, not depicted here, but we will be going into it, is the CMU construction, which is concrete masonry unit type of construction, the kind of construction we're most familiar with and have around. So, this one here is the dino dome. It has, as you can see there, it has a little opening where you could open it up and have that indoor/outdoor experience is what the team was looking at. And then the sprung structure is, you know, I think we've seen those around. It's hard to see in this picture, but that's a really large structure. In order to keep it so snow and stuff comes off, it would really sit high on that hill. And through those, the, you know, just the steering committee, you know, preferred the CMU build as the preferred, just as it sort of, it fit with enhanced and existing structure, the pool structure. So, it sort of fit, it just fit, it fit the site better and in their discussions. On the left of this slide here, we have, it captures some of the work that the, you know, the stakeholder group came up with on the right. And on the right, we have the expanded, what the expanded facility could look like. Where we talked about, from the neighbor's point of view, you know, that right there sort of shows you what it could look like from Front Street. And then on the left, it's showing you a little bit about what the work of what. showing you a little bit about what the work of what, what the steering committee came up with. It, you know, on the left, you have an eight-lane, 25-yard pool, it has a spectator area here with bleachers, you know, we could have expanded, we could have retractable bleachers that could also then retract and create additional deck space for training and exercise for swim teams. We also have a larger deck space up here to the north, as well as an outside area that could be even, could serve as some overflow space as well for more, just for more area and space to work out in and for the community to use. Back on the right side, you'll notice the construction is done with a similar outline. You see the rooftop here, and then you have the subroof, it's similar, it's a similar design to the existing pool, it has that sort of a higher roof, and then it has a little bit of a lower roof. So the frame is, the outline of structure is very similar to the existing pool, sort of matching that. But this has then also a lot of windows and just open air that you can really bring, trying to make a connection between the indoor-outdoor space. This is sort of the top view here, on the right side, you know, shows you the existing Julius Bohm Pool entrance into the facility. And then in front of you here would be the new, that's the expansion on the Julius Bohm Pool, that could have an additional entry right here. There'd be initial, you know, it could be an additional entry to be used by spectators during, you know, community, you know, events and competitions. There's also a nice wall space here that, you know, could be an opportunity, and then they put, we put a little design in there, but it could be an opportunity for some public art to be located there, right?
Brian, before you move on, I think we have a question, Deputy Council President DeMichele.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. Brian, go back to the previous slide.
Yes.
So I'm looking at that right now, there's a big stone wall there, and so I'm presuming that this is proposing to take out that stone wall and have that, so people could walk right onto the grass there, is that?
Well, this right here would be all new construction, so what we'd have is an entry way to walk out into a patio, and then there would be grass out in this area, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, is this the, is this Front Street, the Front Street?
Yes.
Yeah, so right now, there's a tall wall, you know, that you walk along.
Correct.
It looks like it would be removed, and people then would have access to kind of walk onto that, that parky area.
Well, I see what you're saying, I believe I see what you're saying. This wall right here will still be a wall.
Okay.
We talked about, you know, it would be an enhanced wall, maybe some aesthetics and making it look a little nice, and also creating some pedestrian pathway there, it's hard to see, but we, like I said, in our discussions, talked about how can we make that a better pathway, and maybe even creating a buffer between people using the sidewalk and the street, so that there was a little bit of a safety barrier there too, if we can make some of those enhancements.
Yeah, that would be a huge improvement, I walk along there all the time, especially, you know, people with little kids, it's, it probably is a safe sidewalk, it doesn't feel safe because the traffic's flowing past so fast. So I'm really intrigued by, by that proposal, because it would greatly improve the pedestrian experience along there as well.
No, you're not alone in that, the, you know, the steering committee had some of that same, you know, anybody's walked it, you kind of feel that, right?
Thank you.
Okay, going through the entry into the, you know, that we just mentioned, you know, we find ourselves in the expanded facility, you know, as you'll see, there's a large number of windows and skylights connecting users indoors with the outdoors, just a lot of openness, brightness, natural light, that was something that was really important to the steering committee in the discussions. This scene, we've now moved on to the other side of the pool, looking back on where we were previously standing. The area with the salmon-colored wall right over here, I don't know if you can see my cursor, if it's standing out okay, but that would be that connection point that we talked about. You know, the connection back and forth between the existing Julius Bohm Pool and a expanded facility. And I'm sure you've all probably noticed that there's that large wall there too, right there above the bleachers, and that could be another opportunity for some work of art of some type as well, it's just, like I said, what we put in there was just an example of what could be, but that could be an opportunity for some great artwork along that big, that big piece of wall. Sustainability was an important topic for the steering committee, and this slide just sort of calls out some of the features that the team discussed and the importance of sustainability. If an expanded facility occurs, just they really wanted to make sure that that is a piece that is first and foremost on our development and any new construction. Overall project budget and cost estimates, cost estimates were run by a professional cost estimator and include the total cost for construction. There's a little escalation for the next couple of years that serve as a bit of a buffer to help us get a little closer to what the price would be in the future. You can see that out of the three structures, the steering committee considered, the dino dome enclosure was a little more expensive, whereas the sprung structure was a little less than the traditional CMU construction. I think I kind of surprised everybody just how close all three of those different structures Ballard King and Associates worked with the city staff to develop the business and operation analysis that is included in your packets. Assumptions were, are based on an expanded operations in 2026, that's not a, that's not a hard and fast number, that was just a number that was used, 2026 was used as a future date that is, it's close enough for the data to be accurate, yet not too far to skew any of the projections. So they had to use a basis in order to get accurate data, it was a couple of years out, didn't want to go too far, because then as you get further out, it just gets harder and harder to predict. The business operation analysis looked at both the expenses and revenues from both the added and existing facility, and came up with a cost recovery rate of 98%. As a reminder, I think Jeff mentioned this in his introduction, you know, we met with the council, Safety and Parks Committee, and, you know, on December 11th, and staff presented feasibility study then. Out of that meeting came support for considering the pool expansion in the future, support for staff exploring a funding strategy for this project, and important to consider the expanding, and important to consider expanding the funding base, and the committee wanted us to come back to full council here in January, so that's why we're here today. And just to put up our recommendation, you know, we're directing administration to consider this option for expanding pool capacity further in the coming years, in balance with the other capital investment priorities, acknowledging that there are a number of priorities to consider. Explore possible funding sources and develop a strategy that includes regional grants, county, state, and other partners. Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, we are being asked to direct the administration, this is not a vote or anything like that. So the first point is to get feedback from Councilmember Mart as the Chair of the Services, Safety, and Parks Committee. Can you talk about the committee's recommendation on this item?
Sure can, thank you, Council President. On the December 11th, Council Services, Safety, and Parks Committee, the committee unanimously recommended considering expanding pool capacity further in the coming years in balance with other capital investment priorities and exploring possible funding sources, developing a funding strategy that includes regional grants, county, and state, as well as other partners. Other feedback included that it would be important to consider expanding the funding base for a pool if it proceeds, and then the committee recommended bringing it back to council as we have it here this evening.
Excellent, so I've been corrected, we do have a motion that I will make in a moment, but first, we're going to start just with questions. Do you have any questions for Brian or Jeff? Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Council President. Brian, could you go back to the business and operations analysis slide?
This one?
Yep, that one right there.
Yep.
No, not that one, next one.
Oh, sorry, down right there?
Business and operation analysis, that one right there. So can you tell us a little bit about the last one, the total direct operational cost recovery? Oftentimes, when we build parks or we build other facilities, we have kind of a free-rider problem sometimes, in the sense that people that didn't necessarily take part in the bond or pay the taxes for that particular facility in the city of Isaguas, still come from outside the region, enjoy our parks, and items like that. Here we have a different situation, where we have people that'll be using the pool, from the school district, an area that we know we're pulling people from, and will be paying fees commensurate with their, their overall cost. Usually, we don't see a total direct operational cost recovery that high. Can you go into that a little bit, and kind of the numbers behind that?
Absolutely. Do you want to take that one?
Yeah, great, great question, so I think an important thing to point out, we talked about this at committee, is that the work that was done by Ballard King really did look at direct operational costs. So this is all the pool staff expenses, cost to heat the pool, cost of electricity, what's not included in this is facility staff time. We're working with Junie Justice right now, and part of this further exploration will be getting a better idea of what those facility staffing costs would be. At a real cursory level, it's still an impressive cost recovery, and we're interested too in seeing what a total cost recovery would be. Putting in facility staff time into that, we're probably still in the neighborhood of 75 to 80% full cost recovery for a facility, which is a very impressive number. One thing I would point out to your, to your comment of how do we balance investment by residents and use by non-residents? At the pool, we also, much like our other recreation facilities, have a resident/non-resident fee structure, so there's still a recognition that residents who are making, who may be, may be making an additional investment into this facility are seeing a reduced fee and increased access to a facility like this.
Okay, any other questions coming through? Councilmember Ray.
So, thank you, Councilmember Joe, I appreciate the operational cost thing, but I was actually contemplating the capital cost recovery. Do we have any plans on capital cost recovery? If we're going to spend, let's say 19, just because it makes the math easier for me, $19 million, is there some buyback period, or is that just community good, and just like any other park, that we're just going to eat the capital cost, there's no recovery of that?
We discussed the capital investment and capital recovery, but the study, the scope of discovery and the amount of money we had for the feasibility, I did not dive into that.
City Administrator?
Let me take a crack, a couple of steps further. There are multiple ways to fund a pool. There are general obligation bonds, which we have used previously, we also believe that King County will continue to make funds available for this, we believe the state of Washington would make funds available to this. We also have a great partner in the Isaguas School District, as I think all of you know, the current pool is very heavily used, there are no aquatics facilities owned by the Isaguas School District, so all of their swimming and diving teams at all of the high schools are located throughout the district, not only those schools in Isaguas, but all those located outside of Isaguas, all use our aquatics facility. So we think it is likely that we can go to our partners at the Isaguas School District for capital dollars as well. So the reason we're here, and we brought this to the committee's attention, is that quite honestly, we didn't think this option existed. We thought that the feasibility study might bring different kinds of options for different kind of water-related issues, but that this came forward with a pretty straightforward proposal is the reason we're here, we first brought it to the committee, we're here tonight. So we hope that the council will direct the administration to continue looking at what the options would be, not only the operational options, but the capital options, we feel really positive that we can come to some solutions. We're also doing a revised park master plan, we have a five-year CIP up again before you know it, so we're not saying in any way that this project somehow cuts in line or supersedes any of that other planning, but because aquatics are so important to our residents, we felt bringing this forward and getting the council's early understanding of this information, sharing it with the larger community was the prudent thing to do, and we hope that we'll get direction this evening to continue to move forward.
That's great, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hall?
Speaking of the school, do we, are we aware of any long-term plans that the district might have for their own swim and dive facility, or are they squarely in the city of Isaguas basket?
Yeah, to my knowledge, the school doesn't have any plans for a pool structure or facility. And like, just to expand a little bit, you know, we do support the Liberty, Isaguas, and Skyline High School swim teams at the Julius Bohm.
That's a good question for the Bond and Levy Committee, just throwing it out there. Do we have any other questions? Okay, I will get into mine then. This is a strong recommendation that seems to have a huge focus on lane swim that would serve school district swim team, all of that. Do we have a sense of what our current usage is between lessons and lap swim and exercise and community use?
Drop-in and, yeah.
Yeah, because there's a lot of different users, do we know the sense of how much is used by the different types of usages, and which ones maybe are the most constrained, maybe even pushed out by the highest users?
We also, and it's been a delicate balance that we've had, I can remember back even to the late 90s, I can say, everybody, and the beauty about, I think, the way we've always conducted ourselves as a city is, everybody gets something, but I can guarantee you that nobody, including ourselves, is getting everything they want. Now, what the actual breakdowns of that are, I couldn't give you the exact numbers on that, but, you know, would we like to run more swim lessons during some other times they're being used by other users? Absolutely. Would the high school swim teams like more time for practices? Absolutely. Would the Isaguas swim team like to have more time? Absolutely. Would the drop-in swimmers, you know, like to have more lap lane time? Definitely, right? So we've sort of given a little something to everyone, but not everybody, nobody's getting everything they want.
Can I add to that? To your question as well, as we looked at this as a potential option, though, you know, you see those renderings and you see the lap lanes as if that's the only prescribed thing they're going to be, what was really important to us and the, and the steering group was, all of that pool expansion is immensely flexible and programmable in a variety of ways, whether it water exercise, swim lessons, so sort of the spectrum of programming that we do currently in the pool could be done at, in this expanded space as well.
On that idea, before you go away, did we consider other types of pools, such as a zero entry, or something that has a slide, or something like that that is different from what we have? Do we have a sense if there is a need or an interest from the community for something different?
I think that's, some of our goal is continued public engagement, yes, there is interest in our community for some of those other amenities, zero beach entry, et cetera. How that could be incorporated into this kind of option, that again, is not trying to be a whole new pool, but just how do we maximize water capacity at our existing site? We felt like staying within the current model of little pool structure gives us the most flexibility, whereas zero beach entry, lazy rivers, slides, some of those really great amenities you see at new aquatic facilities, take up a lot of square footage and a lot of space. So as we try and at least say what's, how do we maximize this site, it felt like giving ourselves most flexibility with this kind of water space was an option that we are initially exploring. Again, the goal before you tonight is not to recommend this as a project, it's really, I think, this next stage, garnering some public engagement, understanding the trade-offs. Do we hold out and wait for that new pool facility that we can build, that's probably $50 or $60 million, that might have all those great, great amenities, but is going to come at a higher price tag versus considering something like this, that again, tries to take advantage of prior or recent investments at this existing pool and building upon it. So that engagement piece is going to So that engagement piece is going to be really key as a next step.
Well, you just brought up another thing that I was going to ask about, which is, why does this have a much lower cost versus the 2009 study that was the 50 to 60 million?
The 2009 study, let's correct that, was not 50 or 60 million for doing something on the site. So the 2009 study had an array of options, a brand-new pool at today's dollars off-site, and another location is that 50 or $60 million number. The 2009 study did sort of kick the can around, how do we maybe do something on the site? I think the number in the 2009 study was like 25 million. I think what we're seeing that cost savings and cost effectiveness is that $5 million investment that was made. We're not having to upgrade systems, you know, so the investment that the community made at the existing pool, we can now maximize that with just adding water capacity.
Thank you. Now I'll let you back off rather than just keep questioning it. Do we have any other questions? Councilmember Hunt?
Could you speak a little bit about were we to, were we to take this action, and you would continue considering this? Could you speak a little bit about the community engagement plan and how you're planning on reaching out and that?
Reaching out for the actual funding or reaching out for?
With the community, so community engagement. I'm sure there would be a lot of interest and feedback from the community, and so what the plan for that looks like.
Oh, absolutely. I think, and you can jump in with me too if you want, I got started. I think, you know, we have a great connection with all of our aquatic users, so we have that piece of the community that we know well and would be able to reach out to well. I think an important piece is to be, how do we reach out to the areas and spaces that people we don't know, right? What is it they're looking for? And how would we engage them? I think we'd be very, have to be very targeted in some of that work, as well as, I think, just getting out and, you know, talking to, we have all of our social media, which we all know, but like I said, I think an important piece for me is we have a lot of community that uses the pool, there's a lot that doesn't. And I think it's going to be targeting and figuring out what sectors of our community aren't using it, and how do we get outreach to them? You know, do we go up and speak to different communities? Do we get, I think that's what we would be doing, is doing outreach within those communities that aren't getting, that we're not seeing within our facility.
Great question. And to add to some of that, Park Board continues to be interested and will be interested, so I think conversations there. Something we're going to be doing later this year, probably Q2, maybe even early Q1, as part of the mayor's goal of enhancing recreation programs, we're going to be going out to the community with a survey and sort of asking some recreation program-based questions. We think that could be a perfect platform for embedding some of these pool-related questions, some information about this, to getting some community feedback about this concept and this idea.
Great. We need to look at the council, see if there are any other questions from members. Okay, coming in at the end. Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, maybe just, oh yeah, I forgot about that. Maybe just a quick one. Can you talk to me about kind of like how we're thinking the timeline for figuring out the funding part of this? You know, we've had some discussions about a future park district. Has that ever been folded into this conversation about how that could potentially be revenue source? Or are we thinking that's too long-term for something like this?
Yeah, all of the above. So I think timeline, we identified a goal to come back to Services, Safety, and Parks Committee, Q3 or early Q4. By that time, adoption of the Park System Plan Update should be with you, before you, as we, as City Administrator Bobkowitz shared, are trying to balance other community priorities and investment needs. Concepts such as a park district, we feel could be folded into this conversation as well. We obviously want to have partners and begin, or conversations with the school district. I've already reached out to King County and gotten a better understanding. Their next tranche of aquatics capital grants will be coming out in 2025, so we'll have a really good idea, again, that Q3, Q4 timeframe of when those grant funds and how those might line up. So, you know, a lot of work in the coming, in the next six months on this, as well as the Park Plan Update will, I think, help to frame up some of that more macro-level capital funding opportunities or options to consider.
Okay. So now I'm going to ask, is there a motion? Councilmember Mertz?
Yes, Madam, Council President, I would like to make a motion. I'd like to request to direct the administration to further consider the expansion of Julius Bohm Pool's capacity in the coming years in balance with other capital improvement priorities and explore possible funding sources and develop a funding strategy that includes regional grants, county and state, and other partners.
Second?
Thank you. The motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion, starting with the motion maker?
Sure. Thank you. I've been very impressed with the research that was done on this. It seems like a really good way to not start over from scratch, but rather build on a good facility. I was, I was here when Director Watling's predecessor sold us on the $5 million improvements to the pool. So to have that effort that was not all that long ago, it seems to me, continue to give us a strong core and then build on that core to expand the capabilities of the pool seems like a sensible way to look. Eager to see funding models that, as the city administrator said, would allow us to partner. I think what we can't do is fund this entirely on the shoulders of just the residents of Issaquah. It's such a regional resource, but I'm confident that we'll go find, go find the funding mechanisms that allow the regional users of this pool to step forward and expand its capability.
Deputy Council President DeMichele?
Thank you. I strongly support the idea of going ahead and exploring the feasibility of doing this project. As Councilmember Mertz said, I think the research that was done was impressive and the feedback that we received. Just a couple of items from the SSP meeting. We had one person come and make comments, but the comments were powerful. And so if people could watch that video, it would be worth your time. The girls' swim team coach from Issaquah High, who regularly brings 80 to 90 girls over to the Bohms Pool, and just that boggles my mind. But she did an excellent job of explaining how the facility is stretched and how it's used and how frequently they have to leave before they're ready, because the next 80 or 90 young people are coming in following them. It really gave us a good insight into how much this facility is used and needed. The other comment is, I really want to plus-one the whole concept of partnering with the school district, and I had sent Jeff a email earlier today, just asking the question, have we ever thought about a joint bond with the school district? I don't even know what the legality of such a thing is, but certainly, I agree with Councilmember Mertz again, that we, we should not impose the taxes on, just on the city of Issaquah. Really, it is the whole region, even outside of the school district, that is using this pool. So, so those two things, I think, are really important for us to explore, but I think the research that's been done shows very clearly that there's a high demand, and so I think that we need to continue to look at how we can do this for our residents and citizens of the region. So, thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
Echo what's been said. I'll just start by saying thank you. Clearly, a lot of time and effort has gone into this, so I really appreciate you shepherding this, and also all the community members who engaged in the process as well, and our consultants. Definitely special to me, this is where I learned, I learned to swim here, so this is very cool. There's definitely no doubt that there's a great need in the community for more swim space, and I suspect we'll see that again when we engage more with the community about what are the kinds of parks programs and recreation needs that you have, and how can we adapt to meet those needs better? It's a lot of money, and, you know, we just got done going through our CIP, and there are a lot of other capital needs that are top priorities of this council and the community too. So I don't think I'm anywhere near saying, let's do it, like, let's build the expansion of the pool, but certainly, I'm okay moving forward with continuing to study it, trying to find how we would fund something like this, and comparing it alongside all of our other capital priority and needs there, considering trade-offs, all that good stuff. I think potentially considering Park District as part of the solution here is something that I'm interested in exploring more, especially because those kinds of districts can be drawn at the city lines or can be drawn even farther. So that might be worth exploring. And then, of course, the school district is a major user of the pool, so making sure that they're along the ride, every step of the process is going to be really important too, especially as they continue to grow and need more space for pools. So again, happy to support the proposal to move forward with studying it. Thank you again for all the work.
Councilmember Hunt?
Well, firstly, how exciting that this is a option as determined by this feasibility study. I think it's, it's great that we went in open-minded that this might not be an option, and we have concluded that it is, and I absolutely think we should continue to consider it with the other items on our CIP and, and look into funding strategies. So, very exciting. There's absolutely a huge need in the community for aquatic activity opportunities and for swimming opportunities, and there's a, there's a big demand for that as well. One, I'm excited to hear about the community engagement piece, because I think the community will, will really welcome additional opportunities for swimming. And one group that I was thinking you could also reach out with, which may already be on your plan, but is the Senior Center, and just, you know, reaching out to those groups and seeing if, if there have been barriers to them participating in the programs at the, at the pool, you know, what are those, and making sure that we address that in this, in this planning and considering going forward. My kids learn to swim at the pool, you know, it's school groups and kids is another big group, but really, I think aquatic activities are very special in that people have many abilities, can take part and benefit from that, so a huge community benefit. I also think that through community engagement, we can hear more things about, for example, the safety on the, or safety or perceived safety on the walkway with that wall. I've certainly experienced that with kids kind of running fast because they're coming out of the pool and wanting to get to the cars and things. So just, you know, as you're engaging with the community about those improvements that are necessary for increased capacity, I think that, that will be a great conversation to have. And then lastly, since this does serve, this does serve more than the residents of Issaquah, it's a, it's a regional, that people across the region benefit from having these opportunities to swim at a, at a pool like this, I think it will be a very strong candidate for state and county grant funding. It's a huge benefit to the whole region, and so I, I expect that we will be, I expect that we will be a very strong candidate for that sort of funding, and that's another reason why I think we should absolutely continue looking into that.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you, Council President. Through this conversation, I've, I've been impressed with some of the aspects that the Parks Department continues to bring forward. Stewardship and foresight came to mind as I was sitting here listening to this conversation. Stewardship in the sense that this is a public asset, and the Parks Department's been taking care of it, and because they've been taking care of it, we're not putting money back into it for a $5 million redo of the heaters or anything like that. We've been taking care of the public asset there, and that, in turn, was, gives us a leverage to, to take that foresight forward and make a public fund investment in this pool as well. So want to compliment the, the Parks Department on stewardship and foresight as you're going forward. We're looking at trying to find ways to leverage those public funds with our different partners. I'm fully in support of this project and look forward to hearing the updates as they come forward. Thank you.
Have any other comments coming through? I will just take a moment for some of my comments. I'm probably on the more hesitant side than I think we have heard at this point, in fact, until you had mentioned that there have been maybe some conversations or options for working with the school district for some funding and potentially grant funding. I was an absolute no. I know that this is absolutely over-prescribed, and there is a huge need, but I am very hesitant to kind of pre-sign off on what would be multiple tens of millions of dollars of cost without consideration and having that really full conversation about what are our biggest and largest needs. And the one that comes to mind for me is a city hall, the court that we're sitting in right now. All of those are predefined needs. Now, that being said, the fact that this is looking at an option on already existing land, that's a big bonus, and so I can appreciate that. I think the other hesitation that I have is going into this with what seems like a very comprehensive plan based on the needs I view of the school district and the swim teams for lane swim. And so I don't want to get boxed into a pre-decided concept here without really understanding what the needs are. And so I appreciate having heard that there is a desire to go to the community. Like Councilmember Hunt said, I'm sure there are going to be opinions. There's been a lot of opinions from the Highlands that they want a pool up there, and so recognizing what the full needs of the community are and those that aren't being served currently is really important for me. So I will tentatively agree with this as an exploration idea, but I have high needs that will be, need to be met with the next phases of these conversations about how we can share the funding obligations, how this works in with all of our other capital needs, also our staff needs on the facility side, and not being overtaken by one new building versus another. And then really what the Issaquah School District is willing to put up, not only for capital costs, but potentially further operations costs. Because if we are finding that they are one of the largest users of this, and they are saving potentially millions of dollars a year from not having to operate and heat and maintain a building on one of their school facilities, then I think we need to really take that into consideration. If they're not willing to do that, I, I would potentially look at pushing back and saying, you've got a high school that you could build that on rather than necessarily a football stadium. And so there really is a need to recognize the users and where the costs lie in all of this. So those are kind of my comments there. So at this point, if there is no further discussion, the motion before our council is to direct the administration to further consider the expansion of Julius Bohm's Pool capacity in the coming years in balance with the other capital investment priorities and explore possible funding sources and develop a funding strategy that includes regional grants, county and state, and other partners. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you to you both for the presentation and conversation on that. Okay, we have one more item of regular business, but I'm going to check in with the council here. We've been sitting down for an hour and a half, we've got one more regular business, and then an executive session. Do we want to take a five or 10-minute break at this point? I'm seeing a few fives, so I'm going to take a five-minute break before we move into the next item. Thank you.
Next slide. Some of the recommendations that came out of the committee's meeting are to proceed with[11.19][11.19]$100,000 threshold for grant approval. This would mean that the administration could apply for and enter into grant agreements for up to $100,000, provided that any funds for a match were budgeted for in the city's Bynum Bonnajit. The ad hoc committee also recommended that we include a requirement for reporting of grants that are awarded within the administrative threshold to keep council and the public apprised of grants and those processes. And so, language was added to the policy that would require grants to be addressed in the quarterly budget updates. We talked about donations, too. We decided to proceed with two distinct types of donations. Donations for any municipal purpose, which means that there's no strings attached to that gift. We, the recommendation was to allow administrative acceptance of those types of gifts, as long as they don't exceed $100,000. And then to also allow for administrative acceptance of grants up to $100,000 when they are earmarked for a specific existing city program. And the expense, the donation can be used for any expense related to that program. We did decide to not touch another section of the donation policy, which requires city council to accept any donation for a new program that would be donation funded. So, for instance, let's say somebody comes and they, you know, wants the city to establish an additional landmark program where people can donate to have, have put statutes and statutes in the park. We would, we would have, those would still come back to council for your consideration, because that would be a new policy or program that the council would be considering, and that would therefore fall within your purview. We talked about delegation of contracting authority, and we, the committee recommended that we require council approval of all purchase and sale agreements and settlement agreements, regardless of the dollar value, with the exception of settlement agreements related to labor and personnel matters, which would be allowed administratively, as long as they didn't exceed $50,000. That would allow us to enter into very small separation agreements with staff as they leave, resolve small grievances, that kind of thing. Next slide. Other minor edits that were made, we changed, we added a reference to the current CIP, for the CIP criteria that were in Section 6.2, because those were outdated. We addressed actually a number of typos throughout the document. Thank you, Councilmember De Michele, for your thorough review. And we changed references from finance director to chief financial officer to reflect the current job title. We discussed public works contracts at length. The committee, in the end, ultimately decided to recommend to council that we raise the signing threshold for public works contracts to 300,000 or more. So, council would be approving any public works contract that was valued at $300,000 or more, where the current threshold is $100,000. The committee also recommended publishing a list, though, of all the contracts and awards that were made, so that the public can see what all the administratively approved contracts are, and then also somehow, you know, posting those contracts online, finding a way that we, exploring ways that we could make all contracts available to the public, where they just have to click a link, and then they can pull up that contract and view it. We also discussed thresholds for purchased and general services and professional services. The committee was in agreement that we should use the same threshold for all of those types of contracts. So, just backing up on that a little bit. The line between purchase services and our general services and professional services can be kind of blurry. There are some services that you, there are just certainly professional services lawyers. You know, we have to have professional liability insurance, engineers, they have to have professional liability insurance. There are others, though, that it becomes more questionable. So, we were getting a lot of staff confusion over which threshold to apply, because we had a $300,000 threshold for professional services and $100,000 threshold for other services. So, the committee was in agreement that we should have the same threshold for all of those types of services, but that we could treat public works differently, because public works are a much more discreet type of contract. There's an actual statutory definition of what a public works is, so it's a lot easier for us to identify when a service is a public works versus a professional service versus a general service. The committee discussed potential thresholds for the public works contracts. Once again, those are currently set at $100,000, but the committee discussed potentially raising it to $200,000. The administration's recommendation is for $300,000 threshold, which was revised down from our original recommendation of $350,000. And once again, the committee suggested that we publish a list of all of those public works contracts and provide links to those as well. Just to give you a little bit of information about the data that we polled, this chart here shows you how many contracts were, service contracts were approved by the city council in the last two-year period at both the current threshold and the, the professional services threshold here. So, as you can see, there are quite a, well, I guess there's not quite a few here. If the, I think the most salient part of this slide is really that if the professional services threshold were reduced to $200,000, it would just result in an additional 19 contracts that came to council for approval. Next slide, please. You have several options here before you. You can recommend adoption of the, or I guess these should probably be just, you could adopt the proposed amendments as recommended by the ad hoc committee. Of course, this body can make additional amendments, and I know that there are some amendments going around that you've received from the city clerk earlier today. Or you could recommend that no amendments to the policy be made, and we just leave it as is. Next steps are consideration of the ordinance. If it were approved, we're recommending an effective date of April 1st to allow time for staff to learn the policies and conduct training on them. Our other next steps are to begin providing the grant reporting to council, and then also to explore ways to post all contracts and grants in a public portal. We discussed transparency at length in the committee meetings, and I think there is clear consensus among the committee and staff that we should have transparency with our contracts, but that perhaps solely bringing them to council just so that they are in the council record is maybe not the most efficient way to do that. This is the administration's recommendation. I won't read it to you. There's also an optional motion here for you to consider if you wish to insert a different signing threshold for professional and general service contracts than $300,000 that was recommended by the administration. With that, I will take any questions.
And let's see, Councilmember Ray, as chair of the ad hoc committee, do you have any comments to add before we go to questions?
Well, I certainly do. So, the committee consists of Councilmember Hunt, Marts, and myself, and we met twice, as Rachel talked about. And we did have some overarching goals, which Rachel also talked about that, but there was one other one that we didn't touch on, which is also accountability. So, it's transparency, accountability, understanding, maintaining the council's role setting policy, or role as setting policy, and then just overall effectiveness of the process. First, before I say anything else, I want to thank the city attorney, I want to thank the city clerk and city staff who turned this around in like nothing flat, because we met on Thursday and it was in the packet by Friday, so thank you so much. That was, that was fairly heroic, so we could take action today. So, thank you. Generally, the committee agreed on the revisions in the policy. There was one, and Rachel spoke to this a little bit, and it dealt with the professional services and general services contract limit. We were split on whether or not the limit should be 200,000 or 300,000, but I think that'll come up during discussion here. But we did agree to move forward, even though we weren't in alignment on that, because we felt we would give this, the whole, the body of seven, the opportunity. And then finally, and this is sprinkled throughout the presentation, to promote our goal of transparency, we've requested a lot of work to be done in terms of making contracts and grants, et cetera, accessible to the public, not just those that require council approval. Thank you to Councilmember Marts and Councilmember Hunt. It was, it was, it was a great committee, and I think we, I think we came up with some good, good guidance.
And thank you three for doing the deep work, so that the rest of us didn't have to. Appreciate it. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. On the next steps slide, there were three, and the third one, which was the one about the public portal, didn't have a timeframe on it. As was just mentioned, we had a quick turnaround from our discussion last Thursday, and that was something that we discussed at some length in that meeting. And so, I'm wondering if you can, if you could add some definition on the timeline and what those steps would be towards getting us closer to having the data available in a public portal that would be accessible.
Great question. We've identified the staff that we would need to have there. We do not have a meeting set yet. I think that I am the holdup, however, because I'm going to be out of the office next week and the week after. And so, we, realistically, I don't think we'll be getting get-together until mid-February. But we, we do know who needs to be there. We need IT staff there, obviously, and then we'll probably need communications folks who manage some of the website, and then our, our contract specialist as well.
Could you speak to the platform? Existing platform? How will we view?
Is it the doc, no, I can't, can, the, I don't.
Okay, so that's important.
Yeah, we, we have to, we have to figure out if our current platform can manage that, or if we need to get different software to allow that. I think we, I'm assuming there'll be a module within it, because we already do have quite a robust document depository, or at least we have all the DAs.
Rachel, if I, if I may?
Yes.
Hi. Hi, just thought I'd chime in, because I have had some discussions. Hi, everybody, Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder and interim CFO. I have had initial conversations with some staff before we've, we've set up that meeting that Rachel discussed, and I think we're looking at a platform through the website. So, we need to discuss that a little further, do more exploration, but I have received some initial feedback from the clerk's office and others. But, you know, like, like council has said, and appreciate the patience of council, we just started having this conversation late last week and look forward to developing this idea further. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea, for chiming in there. Appreciate it. Okay, so, questions? Councilmember Hall?
So, it sounds like one of our discussions that we need to have is for the purchased and professional service contracts, that threshold of 200,000 or 300,000. So, I kind of want to get a better sense of what that impact is. So, that slide that you have on the service contracts information shows the number of contracts that we approved last year within a particular range of dollars. So, if we set it at 2,000, we, 200, 2,000, let's not set it there, 200,000, we would be seeing 15 contracts. If we set it at 300, we would be seeing 13 contracts? Is that, am I reading that right?
Yeah, can you bring that up?
Just a difference of, not, assuming not every year looks like this, is not every year is the same, but using last year as a base, it would be a difference of two contracts, right?
If we were to reduce it from 300 to 200,000, that would mean there would be an additional nine. The other duration, the other that's listed there, duration or zero-dollar contact, those were, those wouldn't be affected likely, because those were not approved by council because of the amount. They were approved because they were a zero-dollar contract, which was treated differently under the old policy for some reason, or because they had a duration that exceeded two years and therefore required council approval. Does that make sense? So, yes, it would be a change of approximately then 11 if you went down to 200.
If you don't mind, Rachel, I, I put this slide together, and I can tell I maybe didn't do it in the most clear way, because actually, so, the number of 17 reflects all the purchased and professional services the council approved through 2022 and 2023 with the existing threshold of 100 for purchased, 300 for professional. So, if we were to move the threshold for professional services down to 200, that number would double. If we're looking at the last two years, you'd be looking at 36 total contracts. So, it would be somewhat significant, and you are right, it could definitely vary in future years. But that's, that's an approximation, looking at the last two years.
Thank you, city clerk. I was definitely not reading that slide correctly, so I appreciate that clarification.
No, thank you very much. Okay, I have a better sense of the impact.
Okay, still going on, questions? Councilmember Hunt?
I'll just, I'll add that we actually had the information provided on what the contracts were to the ad hoc committee, and so that, that was a document that was provided in our pamphlet and something that we requested. So, we actually have not just the number, but we have the specific types in that earlier pamphlet, or the specific title of the contract.
Okay, continuing on with questions. I'm feeling like there's a little bit of hesitation here on any more questions, so I'm wondering if there is a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Councilmember Ray?
I moved to adopt ordinance number?
3045.
Adopting amendments to the city's financial management plan.
Second. Okay, fantastic. That, the motion has been moved and seconded. Now, we've got a few amendments, but let's start out, any discussion? Motion maker?
I just would, again, just like to reiterate that we, we plowed through a ton of material here, and we're in, able to reach agreement on, I think, all but one salient point in the, in the document, which I think is amazing. So, regardless of where we set the threshold or whether minutes we have, the, the financial management plan, I really think with the transparency issues that Councilmember Hunt raised, really did address our transparency, our accountability issues, ease of use and understanding, trying to have some consistency, keeps the council in a policy-setting role, and provides for a more efficient framework. So, I felt like, you know, all things considered, we, we accomplish what we sent out to, and there's still some work to do in, in terms of the transparency part, but I'm, I'm more than confident that we will get there.
I'm going to take just a moment to make the minor modification motion that was requested by the administration. So, I would like to move to amend Section 4.5, Level of Purchasing and Contract Commitment Authority, to change the following sentence to read, quote, "Maximum contract length, including any contract amendments and extensions without council approval, is three years, with the exception of software as a service and software licensing agreement, which are permitted for up to five years without council approval, and easements, which may be for any duration."
Second.
End quote.
Nope.
Second, okay. So, that's been moved and seconded, so is there any discussion on the amendment? Hey, I am seeing no discussion on the amendment. So, for Amendment 1, to amend Section 4.5, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. So, that is Amendment 1.
Council President Walsh, I'd like to make a second amendment.
Okay.
I move to amend Section 4.5, Level of Purchasing and Commitment Authority, to require council approval of any agreement for lease of city-owned property, except when such lease is for a term of less than one year, and the value of the lease agreement does not exceed the mayor's contract approval threshold as set forth in Section 4.5.
And looking to see.
Second.
There we go. There is a second from Councilmember Joe. Okay, so, we have a second amendment motion on the table. Would the motion maker like to speak to the amendment?
I would indeed, thank you so much. Well, first of all, thanks to the ad hoc committee who, that did a really wonderful job, and I totally agree with the task force's desire to increase efficiency and decrease the council load. However, I'm proposing this amendment because I do want to carve out an understanding in the financial management policies related to city-owned properties managed by nonprofit groups. And you're going to hear that phrase several times in my discussion here, city-owned properties that are managed by nonprofit groups. I'm speaking specifically about properties like the History Museum, the Depot, the Alexander House, Hillstone Feed Store, the Garage, Gibson Hall, Food and Clothing Bank, and Atwork. For these properties, I believe it's very important that the council retain final approval of leases and lease extensions. These properties have many similar, have similar relationships within the city of Issaquah, each one being historic, each one being leased by a nonprofit organization responsible for maintenance, upkeep, and improvements, either in lieu of rent or for rent far below current market rates. In other words, these are leases that really, it's very difficult to determine what the value of the lease is. So, when we talk about thresholds, it's hard to determine what a threshold would be for these particular leases. So, these nonprofits get these properties either for no rent or little rent, not no rent, but little rent, or rent far below current market rate. Each one of these properties serves a public benefit, and there is a definition for public benefit, as gathering places for community meetings, community services, or community education. And finally, the city has longstanding relationships with each of the nonprofits now managing these properties. Quan, for example, has managed, for 70 years. The Chambers managed Alexander House for longer than 40 years, for about 40 years. And the Historic Society has managed the museum and depot for longer than I even know. So, in some cases, it was the nonprofit that built the facility, and others, it was the nonprofit that rescued the facility, such as the depot and the Alexander House. These are properties deeply embedded in the fabric of our community, and although the city legally owns the properties, the fate of each of them is of high community interest and concern. So, by transferring approval of leases and lease extensions of city-owned properties managed by nonprofits solely to the mayor and the administration, as proposed in FMP 4.5.2, the proposed policy would effectively remove approval of leases and lease extensions for these high community interest properties from public comment and from direct council oversight. And while this mayor and this administration are supportive of our nonprofit organizations, by requiring council approval, we add an additional layer of future protection for the nonprofits who manage our properties and have managed our properties for decades, not in the case of the historic, historic society, maybe for centuries, we don't know. I want to point out that the proposed amendment does not change anything about the way we currently operate. It basically retains the status quo. The mayor or administration will continue to negotiate leases for desired outcomes from the properties and from the nonprofits. The mayor can still put the proposed lease or lease extension on the consent agenda. The council can continue to approve them through the consent agenda process. The difference here is that I think that retaining council approval for leases of city-owned properties managed by nonprofits simply increases transparency and allows for community comment and recourse if a group is unhappy with decisions made by the administration or the mayor. Finally, the language of the amendment is broader than my concern about city-owned properties managed by nonprofits, due to the fact that current city leases with nonprofits are very in their terms of length, in the amount of rent or no rent that's being charged, than the provision of the deliverables from the nonprofit. So, instead of naming specific properties, this broader language, we hope, will provide city staff with clear direction on the policy's overall intent. Many, many, many thanks to city attorney Rachel Turpin for talking me through the right language for this amendment. So, I hope you'll join me in supporting this amendment, and I welcome any questions or concerns that the rest of the council may have about this, but I feel very strongly that the council should retain its current ability to approve or not approve the leases for this particular set of nonprofits. Thank you.
Okay, so, we have a, an amendment on the table, so we are discussing that. So, Councilmember Hunt?
Yes, so I have a question, and I think this is for city attorney, city attorney Turpin. So, I am struggling with the exception to the not exceeding, I think. There's a couple negatives in the second clause. And so, if the mayor's contract, if the value exceeds the mayor's contract approval, so it's a high value, then isn't it now an exception to requiring council approval? And how does that language here work?
For those following along at home, I will read the amendment again. Move to amend Section 4.5, Level of Purchasing and Commitment Authority, to require council approval of any agreement for lease of city-owned property, except when such lease is for a term of less than a year, and the value of the lease agreement does not exceed the mayor's contract approval threshold as set forth in Section 4.5.
I'm going to share my screen, and I'm going to show you, I've typed it into my working document here, and I think this might, I think it makes sense, so, but we can all look at it and make sure that there aren't need double negatives in here that are confusing. Can everyone see that, or do I need to blow it up?
Make it bigger.
All right, here we go.
I don't know. I don't know. It's late.
Okay, so this is where I put it. It's the, it would be the highlighted language, and so, it will be, this delegation of authority specifically excludes the following types, which therefore require approval by the, I can clean up that language in the first sentence, too. But I put in there, which may be administratively approved. Does that clear it up, if I add that language there for you?
Is it the dollar amount that bothers you?
It is not. It's the, it's the construction of the, of the sentence that is just confusing. So, I'm just looking for clarity. Okay, so, is it that there, there is an exception to this when the term is both less than a year and is a?
Within.
when the term is both less than a year and is a small?
Within, yes.
And is below, why don't, maybe you can just write, is below the.
Yes.
Threshold.
Yep.
Below the 100,000, I believe it would be that threshold. But yes, below the.
Yes.
Then we don't have a, does not exceed in an exception.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
I can do that. I won't make you watch me type, but I can do that.
Okay. Question.
And I do have one more question. So in the meeting, in the ad hoc meeting, we discussed a example of why it would be important from the efficiency goal that we had to allow for certain leases to not require council approval, or why it didn't make sense. And the example that was given was a storage unit that the city was leasing, and it was for a small amount. And it was something that the city was using for, you know, routine programming. And do they need council approval? And that was unclear. So that, those, those routine, small leases, those are not affected by this. So that efficiency conversation that we still are able to. The administration under this proposed amendment would still be able to have staff members not require council approval for those routine, small leases for things like storage units.
That's correct. This amendment, as worded, would only, it wouldn't even affect the city leasing any property for use by the city. When I say with the city leasing, I mean where the city is the lessee, where the city is going out and trying to lease property from someone else to use, as long as that was within the dollar threshold. Obviously, we're not in the business of entering long leases. So I don't expect that to be used other than for things like storage units. The other exception, that the new one that's been added here, the reason for that. So what, under this amendment, council would then approve, have to approve any lease of city-owned property with minor exceptions. And that would be for anything, for a contract that was small, within the smaller, within the threshold, and for a short term. And I can give you a good example of that, too. We had a contractor who wanted to use some space in City Hall Northwest parking lot to store some materials for a city project. And we, they wanted to know if they could lease space from the city. And of course, we didn't think there would be an issue with that. But they needed to come up with a plan like that week. And so we didn't have time to bring it to the city council for approval. And so it would allow us to do those kinds of small. And it would also then theoretically, we do have other rental agreements, which I guess could be construed as a lease, like our facility rentals. And so it would also allow us to continue doing those within policy because they're less than a year and small now. Does that make sense?
Councilmember Ray.
I want to kind of make sure I get the intent here. So, because it's the logic that's, of the sentence that's kind of killing me. So the intent here is if we're leasing city property, the general, that would be exempt from the other provisions that we outlined here. It would say those don't, any, all leases of city property would come to the council.
Correct.
Except. And this is where I get confused. Short, so less than a year. And then and, below the threshold, or or below the threshold.
And.
And, so it's got to be short and cheap.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And so, and we think that captures, knowing Councilmember DeMichele, and I think I do, the intent of this really is to make sure that we're seeing some of these leases to not-for-profits. And this is making it a little broader. So we have, we have flexibility in some instances. But, but we get to see them for the things that we think are important.
Correct. We, we discussed making it more narrow, as originally requested by Councilmember DeMichele. But as we discussed it further, it seemed like that might raise more questions than provide guidance to folks. Because I, for instance, I thought, well, we could, you know, we could limit it to those nonprofit contracts that were, that were noted. They, most of them have some sort of non-monetary compensation involved with them. And so I was like, oh, we'll just limit it to ones where part of the compensation for rent is, is non-monetary. But our brilliant city clerk pointed out to me that questions will still arise with that because all lease agreements require the lessee to do some sort of work, you know, something in addition to rent. And so I felt like we were adding.
And.
More ambiguity.
And most of the leases we're talking about here are for small dollar values. So likely would be below the mayor's, or the threshold.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. We won't see anything.
So it's, so that, and though it's, I think it's an important and, it's probably done on an operational and.
Yes.
Because we probably would not be effective. But so it really is, except if they're really short. So we're going to see every lease agreement except stuff that's super short. I'm okay with that.
Councilmember Hall.
I guess I'm just wondering if the administration's okay. Does the administration have a position on this amendment?
Mayor Polly's feeling, when we discussed it with her earlier, was that she did not want an exception just for nonprofits, that she felt it was appropriate for any property. We have a few that are for-profits, and so she wanted the blanket. I think this language.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
Do we need to change the, I mean, we probably do a friendly amendment. But given what we just talked about, do we need to change the language in the amendment?
Yes. I was going to ask, there is a suggestion from the clerk to reflect the conversation that would adjust the case to rather than does not exceed, says is below. So it reads, except when such lease is for a term of less than one year and the value of the lease agreement is below the mayor's contract approval threshold. So as a friendly adjustment, does that agree with the motion maker?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Second?
The second also agrees, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
And I highlighted and bolded the and. Just to be safe.
Great. So I'm not seeing any more discussion. I would like to take a vote on the amendment. So I'll read it again. Move to amend Section 4.5, Level of Purchasing and Commitment Authority, to require council approval of any agreement for lease of city-owned property, except when such lease is for a term of less than one year and the value of the lease agreement is below the mayor's contract approval threshold as set forth in Section 4.5. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Okay, so that amendment passes unanimously. Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Council President. I move to amend the signing threshold table in Section 4.5, Level of Purchasing and Contract Commitment Authority, to require city council approval of non-public works contracts that exceed $200,000 per year.
Is there a second? Second? Okay. We have a third amendment. Councilmember Mertz.
So 200,000 versus 300,000 is not a huge difference. And I, and I would say, you know, Finance Policy Ad hoc Committee Chair Ray did a nice job explaining that we had general agreement. And, and we're not that far off on this one either. But I have a very specific reason why I like 200,000 more than 300,000. And it really gets to separation of powers that are inherent in federal government and all the way down to municipal government, right? We write the checks and we write the laws. And so when does something become policy to the extent that it should be our business? And differing, well-intentioned minds can differ. But for me, I really wanted to take a threshold of one FTE year worth of labor. So I took essentially the area median income. I put a 1.5 factor on that, which is a general multiplier that you have to pay somebody a salary, you've got some sort of multiplier on it. I came up with about 200,000. So for me, I wanted something that if somebody in the public, and we heard it from Steve Correa tonight, right? Bringing up this issue. So it's not just me. I'd love to hear it, I'd love to hear it from Steve. You know, if the public says, are you guys doing your duty? Are you guys doing your job? Yes. Because if it's more than a FTE year's worth of labor, which is a A threshold that you, we're going to have, we're going to have covered. So that's why I chose that number. I think Councilmember Hunt may have arrived at that number through a slightly different process. But that's how I came up with it. It really involves having a coherent methodology that I can explain to people as to why we pick the. So just wanted to share my thoughts and why I moved this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I, I also, on the ad hoc committee, preferred the 200 threshold for this. And I, I appreciate the reasoning that Councilmember Mertz gave. And the little bit different way that I was thinking about it is, we had requested, and actually, I think Council President Walsh had requested information about the different contracts and how these different thresholds would affect the number, but also the type of contracts that would come by council or not under the different thresholds. So at the ad hoc committee, we were, we were provided with that list. It was in our council packet. And so I was looking in that list if there were sort of breaks in the sorts of contracts that were being approved at those different thresholds to try to assess the efficiency versus council policy oversight and council, maintaining that council policy role. And so in that list, the ones that are between 100 and 200 were things like a landscape services contract and a janitorial services contract. And then when you get into the above 200, it seems to me like there were more of the design contracts. So the one at 208 is a Newport Way landslide stabilization project design contract. And then there are a number of other ones at the higher level. And so that's, that's where I, that's why I preferred the 200 threshold. It was more on the, it seems to me like there's a break around the 200,000 for things that are routine. And, and it would be more efficient for staff to be able to do that with, with approval not going by council. And then for those above 200,000, it seems that those would be beneficial for council to maintain that oversight role. So that's how I came to that. And I will point out that all of this is also things that are budgeted as far as the role of, the role of council. We do have budget oversight. And so these are things that are budgeted. And then it's coming back to us with the specifics of the contract. But council also has an additional layer of policy oversight through the budgeting process, which we do, which we do with a lot of deliberation and diligence every time we look at a budget.
And every time we look at a 500-page packet, and all of that. Councilmember Mertz, the clerk has requested that you read the amendment motion again, because it seems to differ a little bit from what's in the agenda bill.
Okay, well, I, it was the language that I got from our legal counsel this evening.
Yes, that was my, I wrote him a motion in the meeting before I remembered there was actually one in the packet. Would you prefer we use the motion that's in the? I don't, I just need the wording. So if someone can send it to me. I'll disboard you the email. Okay.
Fantastic. It sounds like we can have staff forward to staff, and we are good there. Okay, so we have Amendment Three on the table. Councilmember Ray.
Well, let me speak to the other perspective. And, and this is a discussion we had during the ad hoc committee. And we, we were okay with not agreeing. And we wanted to bring these arguments or these points of view forward to the, to the larger body. So I think grounding in something like an FTE is a way to do it. I, I came with my number from a different perspective than a policy perspective. Because I don't actually think that approving a contract is necessarily a policy decision. I think budgeting for a particular piece of work that we're going to contract with is a policy decision. I think establishing what our guidelines are for how to let an RFP is a policy decision. I think having a discussion around what the terms and conditions of a contract should be is a policy decision. But once the contract is put together within some bounds, you know, what we're opining on is, are those terms and conditions, and is that scope of work, particularly professional services or a, what's the other services? General services? It really comes down to what are the terms and conditions of the contract? And what's the scope of work in the contract? And I really feel like that's, that is an operational decision. And so to some threshold, that is a, the job of the administration to do that. Now, I do think there should be, you know, now I'll backtrack and say, I do think there is a threshold where we want it. But that is really around more the accountability and the visibility perspective. We want to make sure that, at a certain point, we want to make sure that there's accountability for making sure that the contract is well, well-constructed and well-thought-through, and we're doing an oversight function at some level. So that's kind of how I separate out the policy from the operational aspects of this. The other thing, the reason I picked 300, not, you know, 175 or 7,000 or whatever, is our public works, we set at 300. And, you know, currently, the professional service is at 350, so.
300.
It is 300.
It is 300.
Oh, okay. Well, currently, it's at 300, and so it's a no change. And then, and, but it is a big jump on the, the general services. I think currently it's 100, so we're jumping that to 300. But one of the big issues that the city attorney brought up was, gets a lot of business from us because staff doesn't always have a good understanding of what's a general service is and what's a professional service is. And so we're, by, we agreed to align on whatever the number is, it should be the same. So if we agree it's 200, it should be, all services contracts should be 200. If we say it's 300, it should be all services contracts. So that's, that was how I picked, that was my rationale for picking a different number. So I'm curious what other people's perspectives might be.
Sounds like a robust conversation that comes to the other four of us. Councilmember Joe.
Could we hear from the administration if they have anything to add to the discussion for the $300,000 recommendation they're putting forward?
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. And I want to recognize Natalie McNabb from our Finance Department, who's on the line this evening. She, she is the rubber beating the road. She is the individual that deals with us on a daily basis. You know, we, we've had a similar discussion you're all having at the dais internally. And we've tried to weigh efficiency, we've tried to weigh accountability, and we settled on the 300. Is there, does the world come to an end if it's 200? Of course not. Should it be 500? Who knows? But we felt that 300, based on the number of contracts, the types of contracts, the discussion, I think, many of the points that Councilmember Ray made, that's where we landed. And I want to thank Natalie while she's on with all of you. You know, it's very difficult to maintain all the things you want. And we have one person who does the lion's share of that, working with all the departments. So Natalie, thank you for that. You've been very involved in all of this. You know, I think we're just trying to help you, as the administration, meet all the objectives that you've been talking about over the last half an hour, 45 minutes.
It's really largely a consistency issue. Natalie, do you have anything you want to add on this?
No, I just appreciate what Wally had to say, because that is all true. We're trying to make it visible and everything to the community. And the 300 would be the ideal, because it would align everything, and it's understandable and easy as well.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Joe, for asking for the administration's perspective. Looking to see if any of the other non-ad hoc folk want to weigh in on this. I know as soon as I talk, Councilmember Hall is going to raise a, go ahead.
I don't know how that happens, but, no, just really quickly to say.
I don't know how that happens, but, no, just really quickly to say, I think I'm comfortable keeping it at the $300,000 limit. I think it being aligned across the board makes a lot of sense to me, and I thought Councilmember Ray's points were most persuasive to me. So I think, so the motion is to change it to 200, right? Okay. So I think for now, I won't be supporting this motion, but that doesn't mean this can't be revisited again in the future as we're monitoring it. But I just think kind of the points of leaving it consistent across the board seems a little bit more compelling to me.
Anyone else? That would really be you, Deputy Council President. Here. Okay, fantastic. I'm just looking at you, and you're looking at everybody else. Um, yeah, I guess I would say, as my comments, I feel like we could kind of go either way, but for, since one of the main criteria on all of this was trying to simplify this for staff approval and the concept that contracts are only one portion of the oversight, really the oversight happens at the program and expenditure and policy level. I think I'm probably on the 300,000, but I will hear from any other, any other council members want to opine, or shall we work on the vote? Okay. So the amendment on the table is move to amend the signing threshold table in Section 4.5, Level of Purchasing and Contract Commitment Authority, to require city council approval of non-public work contracts that exceed $200,000 per year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, and so that fails two to five. Okay? And so we are back to the main motion, where we have the first two amendments that have passed. And so again, we are looking at the Financial Policy Ad Hoc Committee recommendations. On the main motion, do we have any discussion? Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. I would just comment that as a person who's been on the outside trying to find city contracts for my former position with a garbage and recycling company, it's very difficult to find an actual approved contract for any city that I was dealing with. And I think that being able to look at those contracts gives the competitors an opportunity to see what is being done well and what is not being done well, and to offer improvements, because they know what the requirements are, and they know what should be done, and they can figure out if they can do it at a lower price, at a more competitive basis, with better personnel, or whatever the case may be. So opening these contracts up to public view, I think, provides a windfall for our city in the sense that the competition will be better for the services provided. So just thought I'd throw that in as a comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. Really appreciate all the information that was provided in this meeting and to the ad hoc to help us make these recommendations. I appreciate all of that work and finding us the information we requested. And I think the one thing that is the kind of loose end is the public portal for accessing the contracts. And so I do look forward to having an update on how those meetings go that you're planning on having and having progress on that, because I think that would be great, and that does seem like the next step in improving on the transparency piece of this and making those contracts easily accessible to the public and to the people looking for that. So I think that's the one area where it would be great to have a follow-up within a reasonable amount of time, but, you know, as a next step to continue to move forward on that. And again, thank you for all of the, all of the support and documentation that you've provided to guide us through this process.
Thank you. Deputy Council President DeMichele. We can't tell whether that's up or down, so if you would just, you know, yeah, thanks.
He will be, he will be last. So, you know, I just want to commend the process. We talked about this at the council, and there was confusion, and there was lots of questions, and so then it was suggested that we have an ad hoc, and we had people volunteer for that and clarify a lot, you know, reading through all of the amendments. They were really well done and well thought out, and bringing it back here tonight for further discussion. I think this process has been great, and I just wanted to commend everybody, really, because it was a really good discussion, and people listened to each other, and I think we've arrived at a much, much better place. So thanks to everybody that participated, and I will be supporting, you know, the motion, but with a lot of appreciation for my fellow councilmembers.
I think I will jump in at that point, just to add on to that. This hasn't just been a good process with the council. I really want to commend staff for not just being satisfied with, oh, this is the way it's always been done and has to be done, but to look at what are the needs of the community and staff to be able to do their jobs effectively and efficiently, and to avoid areas of confusion. And it could be easy to just say, oh, no, that's just the way that it has to be done, and instead to be able to go, okay, we're going to, we're going to have the conversations and figure out what the needs are. I appreciate the Ad Hoc Committee for setting goals of doing a review and recognizing that when we make a change, it needs to be judged on some sort of concept of, are we making an improvement? If so, what are the areas that we're making adjustments? So just appreciate it overall, and, yeah. So, anyone else speaking to the main motion? Okay, fantastic. I'm just waiting for it. Okay, so the motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 3045, adopting amendments to the city financial management policy, as has been amended this evening. That motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for working with me as we go through motion and amendment and all of that. So we made it through all of that. Okay, next item of business is committee and regional reports. So Councilmember Joe, you are starting us off.
Thank you. The Cascade Water Alliance Board Meeting will be held January 24 at 3:30 p.m. There's a hybrid option, or you can go there in person to see their new offices. February 7, the Public Affairs Committee will be meeting at 9 a.m. in the morning. And finally, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will be having a meeting on February 14 in the afternoon. The specific time will be posted on the website. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
The last meeting of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors was last Thursday, January 11. We had lots of promotions and special recognitions of staff. We officially have a new emergency manager on staff. We also have a new deputy fire chief for operations, so it's very exciting. We also adopted a new code of conduct for public meetings. Our next meeting is Thursday, February 8 at 4 p.m. at our headquarters on Newport Way Northwest. Board orientation is that day, and also we'll be looking at some of our board-specific goals of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Strategic Plan. And that concludes my report.
Right. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. The Planning, Development, and Environment Committee met on January 3, and we had one item on the agenda. It was ID 1493, which is the comp plan update and SEPA scope review. The first thing we talked about and got answers on was what this is and why it's required, and what's the benefit to the city of having this information. So SEPA requires an EIS to be completed, and the EIS must consider a reasonable number of growth alternatives. The benefit is that the city learns of the potential infrastructure needs and mitigation strategies under different growth assumptions, and then, this is useful for long-range planning, public works uses the data for modeling and prioritizing capital projects, and then developers can use this information also to evaluate project feasibility. So we discussed and reviewed the proposed growth alternatives that would be considered, and we were asked a number of questions. We, one of which was if there were additional topics or concerns, and we didn't have anything, we didn't have anything that we wanted added specifically to the list, but we did, we did have a number of topic conversations that we wanted to be considered in the process. We wanted, we discussed the importance of partnering with the school district, because these growth alternatives, these will have a big impact on the schools, and they are also very invested in doing the same sorts of planning around these growth alternatives. And then we also talked about the importance of disaster, considering the infrastructure needed for disaster planning, and especially with climate change changing the risk, for example, looking at evacuation capacity and things like that. And so we did, we did flag those as wanting additional consideration on those. And then we did not add additional specific growth alternatives that we thought they should evaluate, but we did vet the growth alternatives that had been proposed by staff and got a lot of information about how they arrived at those. And we also clarified in the meeting that when they have the results of those studies on the different alternatives, those will then be brought back to council for a policy discussion, and then that's when council can weigh in on those different alternatives that will be, that will have the information from the study about the implications for long-range planning and infrastructure. So very, very detailed conversation, and it was ultimately asking for our feedback, so there was no action, and this is part of the comp plan update. The, one other upcoming meeting, there will be a meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council of Wyre 8, which is our watershed, on this Thursday, the 18th. And among other items, we will be discussing the legislative priorities and a letter to state legisla, a letter to state legislature, a letter to the state legislature on the salmon recovery priorities for this coming year. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Unless you want a recap of the ad hoc, I'm going to say no report tonight.
I could go without, thanks. Councilmember Marts?
Thank you. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee won't be meeting until February. The Services Safety and Parks Committee will be meeting Tuesday, January 23, here in Chambers at 6:30. Currently on the agenda is Proposed Economic Development Action Plan, arts grants funding, and religious and cultural calendar. This concludes my report.
Deputy Council President DeMichele?
Thank you. I chaired the Eastside Human Services Forum monthly meeting on January 11, and the Eastside Transportation Partnership on January the 12. And since these were the first meetings of 2024, both meetings were focused on internal operations and organizational planning for 2024. So the Eastside Human Services Forum Board approved Alisa Peterson to be the forum's new executive director, and Ms. Peterson's previous experience includes outreach for the King County Sheriff's Department and multiple positions on Human Services Board, and a stint as the executive director of a startup nonprofit. And she joined us after we voted to approve her contract. She joined us, and we had a really good conversation about outreach across the region for people in homelessness during this freezing weather period. So I'm excited, and I think you'll probably be getting to meet Ms. Peterson in the near future. She's coming on with a lot of passion and energy, and I'm excited for what she's going to be able to do for the forum. The Eastside Transportation Partnership also used our meeting time to discuss future presentations and discussion topics. We also approved a potential in-person meeting to be held in March and another one in September, and then we discussed ETP's potential financial policy changes. So our regular schedule of informational presentations will begin again in February. The Regional Transit Committee meeting for January was canceled. Thank you.
Okay, I will start with my report and then go to the mayor's report. The Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board met on January 4. We had four discussion items, nothing of action. The King County Affordable Housing Committee actually meets this Friday at the City of Bellevue City Hall. We're going to have an in-person meeting, so we can have a nice conversation about, hey, what's the point of the Affordable Housing Committee? Are we meeting our goals? Should we shift our focus? We're just going to delve really deep into, you know, nasal gaving and self-reflection, but also, are we doing the right things? And so I really appreciate that, looking forward to that conversation. And then for upcoming meetings, both the Growth Management Policy Board and the Affordable Housing Committee both meet on February 1, and the agendas are not yet released. So that concludes my report. There is no mayor's report this evening, but there will be an executive session, as noted on the agenda. The next item of business is good of the order. I'll start with upcoming council meetings, then we've got another one. I also want to announce the city council appointments. So Tuesday, January 30, there is a special city council meeting announced for the mayor's State of the City address, which occurs as part of the Issaquah Chamber of Commerce Breakfast at 7:30 a.m. at the Hilton Garden Inn. For the council members who'd like to attend, please get in contact with Regina in the mayor's office so that she can get you registered. Saturday, February 3, the city council retreat at 9 a.m. at the Tibbetts Manor. The agenda has not yet been finalized. We'll be emailing you guys with the typical homework and ways to be prepared so that we can come in and have a robust conversation. So look for that a week before. And then Monday, February 5, the regular city council meeting. The anticipated agenda items include a public hearing on the vacation of a portion of Second Avenue Southeast, a public hearing on multifamily tax exemption ordinance, and an informational update on the 2022 greenhouse gas emissions inventory. So those are upcoming meetings. I will let Councilmember Marts go, then I'm going to go into the city council appointments.
I have a couple of good-of-the-order, really, I think, questions for my fellow councilmembers. The first is, I was confused in public comment today. Having the public ask us to consider drafting and supporting a resolution seems like it is the business of the council. So I would just ask council leadership to discuss with the administration and perhaps with our legal counsel if it does meet the standard. I would think, I mean, we have had resolutions in the past on various matters, so that does seem like it would be germane to the council. The second is, on the subject of remote public comment, I would like to ask that the council consider whether, in the current national environment, having remote public comment continues to be valuable for us. I note that, having been on the council for a very long time before we had remote public comment, it's essentially the same cast of characters, and I mean that lovingly, like Connie and Steve and the gang, like, I love hearing from them, but they're the same people who used to make public comment physically in front of us. But time and time again, we're seeing nationally a challenge for this remote public comment, and it would just be heartbreaking to see that be a problem here. So I'd like to ask council leadership to consider, again, in a conversation with the administration, whether remote public comment has outlived its usefulness. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will note, I was acting based on the provisions that we had been given by legal council as far as what is and isn't, but I absolutely... counsel as far as what is and isn't, but I absolutely, having had that experience tonight, will be looking to have further conversation if anybody has any input. I would definitely welcome it, both on the concept of, you know, considering resolutions and whether that's germane to city business, as well as whether there are concerns or desires to continue with remote public comment. So we'll let everybody noodle on that. If anybody comes up with any comments here, great, otherwise, get in touch and all of that. So Councilmember Joe?
Just briefly, I have a, just to go to the order, I, I would like to thank Eastside Fire and Rescue for their prompt response and their professionalism. On Saturday, the apartment above mine needed to have Eastside Fire and Rescue show up because of a fireplace issue. And fortunately, there was no water damage or serious damage to their unit or my unit, but they showed up very promptly, as I said, and very professional. They did a great job. I just wanted everyone to know that they're out there and they're protecting us. Thank you.
Always good to hear. So one of the responsibilities of council leadership at the beginning of the year is always to look at our council committees as well as any of the regional dedicated seats. And so you guys will have seen in the packet in the Good of the Order, the appointments, but I'll just make a point of announcing, for our standing committees, we're keeping everything from last year. So same chairs, same committee members. So Mobility and Infrastructure will be chaired by Councilmember Ray with members of Deputy Council President DeMichele and Councilmember Hall. Planning, Development and Environment Committee will be chaired by Councilmember Hunt with members myself and Councilmember Hall. And Services Safety and Parks Committee will be chaired by Councilmember Marts with members, Deputy Council President DeMichele and Councilmember Joe. I think I actually have to ask the council if there are any concerns with having the Deputy Council President serve on to committees. So the reason that we ended up on that was just, otherwise, we would have had to switch a bunch of people around because then the chairs can't be on to committees as well. But if anybody does have any concerns with that arrangement, please let me know, and I will have the clerk look into whether we need to actually make that through a motion or amendment. So we'll get back to you if that's the case. For our dedicated seats, there were just a few adjustments for Cascade Water Alliance. The main seat will be Councilmember Joe with Mayor Polly as the alternate. Eastside Fire and Rescue, Councilmember Hall and Marts are the main members, and I am coming in as the alternate. Eastside Transportation Partnership continues with Deputy Council President DeMichele, and Councilmember Hall is being added as the alternate. Greater Risk Quad Chamber of Commerce Liaison continues with Councilmember Joe. King County Climate, King County Cities Climate Collaboration KFC Representative, Councilmember Hunt is the alternate. Mayor Polly is the regular member, as is typical. Lake Sima Michikone Interlocal Management Committee is Councilmember Hunt continuing. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, LTAC, continues with Councilmember Joe. And then Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, Councilmember Marts continues, and then Councilmember Hunt is joining as the alternate. And the Wyre 8 Water Resource Inventory Area 8 Salmon Recovery Council continues with Councilmember Hunt. So I hope this satisfies everybody's needs. If there are any concerns, let your council leadership know so that we can get into it. The next steps will be the clerks reaching out to each of these organizations to make sure that there are invitations going out so that everybody gets the necessary information since there are some changes. Just be on the lookout for that. You may want to get in contact with anybody else who is on the board, such as I will be doing for Eastside Fire and Rescue, to make sure that we know when the next meeting is for any of those changes. And can we do a proposed motion during Good of the Order? Okay. So there is a proposed motion to approve an exception to the City Council Rules of Procedure Section 2.04, Appointment Standing Committees, to allow a member of council leadership to be appointed to standing committees in 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, is there any discussion on the motion? Concerns in there?
No concerns, just to say, I did it last year as Deputy Council President, and I have no doubt that Deputy Council President DeMichele can as well.
Okay. Maybe something, we come back at some point to our council rules of procedure if we are finding, I will say, as council leadership, it's been a little bit difficult to meet all of the criteria of chairs only being on one and not on another and leadership not. So just something we may look at in the future. But on that, the proposed motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, clerk, for just jumping in there on last minute. And Councilmember Hunt?
I just wanted to make one, one additional comment to the question that was posed by Councilmember Marts and for the leadership and for the administration on public comment. I think our equity board has done a good job advising us on how to make sure that our meetings are accessible. For example, with our religious and cultural holiday calendar, part of that is, is helping us make sure that we're having, having meetings on days where people are able to attend and have it not conflict with those, those holidays. And so I think that if there were to be a contemplated change, I think the impact on accessibility would be important. People that have jobs where they have to get back to their job and wouldn't be able to come in person, people that have childcare issues, you know, there are many different, many different reasons why a virtual option might be possible to attend a meeting, whereas an in-person might not be for a number of reasons. And so I think if we, if we were to contemplate a policy change on that, I would want to make sure that it is also considered. I would, I would recommend that we consider that also going by the equity board for those accessibility concerns.
Fantastic. And thanks, everybody, for bringing this up. We will talk with the administration and see if there is either an update to how we handle things and potentially conversations maybe at the board level of how, how we approach that. Fantastic, lovely. Are there any other items for Good of the Order? Okay. So we have an executive session. And so the next item of business is an executive session. City Council will now recess into executive session to discuss collective bargaining per RCW 42.30.140 per N4 and pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per N I. We are going to estimate approximately 20 minutes for these items and will extend the executive session as needed. No action is anticipated following open session. Please note, executive sessions are close to the public, and we will now recess into executive session at 10:04 PM. I ask clerk to move the city council and any relevant staff into a separate session within this meeting. Anyone who is not part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting. You're welcome to stay in the meeting until it is reconvened.